..................................................................................................................
I'd like to call the regular board meeting of December 2nd, 2024 for the Huron Valley Schools to order. We just had a closed session and we have adjourned from that, so we're ready to open up the, uh, the meeting of, as I said before, the regular board meeting for tonight. So with that, could, from our secretary, Ms. Mastana, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Grisemkowski, here. Mr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present. Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next on the agenda is items from the board president. At this point in time, unfortunately, once again, uh, we had a tragic situation occur in our country. I believe it was Madison, Wisconsin. Is that correct? Or Milwaukee? And with that being said, could we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. As the school board, we appreciate the members of our community share the public comments during their designated times during our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for our Board of Education to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the board to conduct the business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act, comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by our superintendent or a member of his team. There are two segments in the agenda for public comments in section three and seven respectfully. Five minutes have been allocated in section three for public comments related to action, which are voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than fifteen minutes allocated in section three so that all public comments or on action or voting items may be heard in that section prior to the board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during section seven of the agenda if not already heard in section three. All speakers wishing to address the board must be present. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comments will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, a timer will sound indicating that public comment has concluded and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. The individual, as I said before, must be present to share their public comments. We ask that you share your name, address, and home school district before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, I, as board president, will, to the extent permitted under the First Amendment, interrupt or end your comment time. If you plan to share public comments, please complete the form, uh, next to Ms. Caddell, who's raising her right hand. And, uh, I want to thank you for your professionalism and your participation and partnership ahead of time. Uh, those are the only comments that I have tonight as board president, and I'm going to turn it over now to recognition.
Good evening. As you know, Huron Valley Schools takes pride in being a triple-A district focusing on the successes in academics, arts, and athletics. At each Board of Education meeting, we try to showcase those accomplishments in all aspects throughout the district. As our winter sports season gets underway, we wanted to take a moment to recognize and celebrate the hard work, dedication, and success of some of our student-athletes during the fall sports season. Now, I would like to welcome up Lakeland Athletic Director Todd Miller and Milford High Athletic Director Jim Marzalak.
Uh, all right, yeah. My name is Todd Miller. I'm the athletic director here at Lakeland High School. Thanks for having us tonight. Uh, we had a very successful fall season, but we're here to, uh, recognize two teams in particular. Um, our boys and girls cross-country teams. We're going to bring them up separately, but both had tremendous fall seasons. Can I have the boys come on up here? Coach Joe Varellan was unable to make it. But, um, we have five of our seven gentlemen that competed at the state meet, uh, that were able to be here, right here. I'm going to introduce these guys. Um, they are back-to-back regional champions, MHSA regional champions. That's a big deal. Uh, winning regionals are very, very tough. Um, they were also academic all-state, uh, LVC league and regular season champions. Uh, also, uh, conference champions, and then they went on to, uh, place top ten at the state meet as well. So, um, here we have, not here, we, uh, Gavin Johns is not available to be here. He's actually practicing basketball. And then, um, also, um, uh, we have one more who's, yeah, uh, yeah, Gabe Mahler's not here, I'm sorry. And then we do have here, uh, Matthew Varellan. He's a captain. Where's Matthew? There you go, give a wave. We have Aiden McDonald, Jacob Casadillo, there he is, Brendan Hummets. Uh, and then we have, also, we have Michael Navalah. So, uh, these gentlemen, cross-country, as you guys know, um, most of us can't run three and a half miles, let alone in a full sprint and all the terrain. Uh, Coach Varellan does a tremendous job with these guys and the, the tradition of excellence at Lakeland and running continues on. Coach Varellan did want me to add that this group of athletes are extremely dedicated to improving each day. They raced hard and fearlessly knowing their teammates would always be there to support them. So, that was from Coach Varellan. So, great job, guys. Um, and not to be outdone, our girls' cross-country team, come on up, ladies, and I'm going to turn this over to our girls' cross-country coach, uh, Chris Labut, and he's going to talk a little bit about his team.
Hello. They won the regional back-to-back conference regular season championship back-to-back. Uh, LVC championship meet, JV team was the hot, best scoring in the LVC also. They, uh, don't really try necessarily to win as much as they're competitive and motivated. And when the motivation's waning, they are disciplined and get through those dips. And the discipline comes easy when they have a bunch of really fun teammates, show a lot of love for each other, makes it really easy to show up, work hard. They look out for each other, and it has created a, uh, about as big a team as Lakeland's ever had for girls' cross-country. They're really deep. We had multiple races this year in the JVN varsity where there were injuries and sicknesses and different people scored, and they still did well regardless of the situation. So, they're tough and they're awesome. Oh, yeah. So, we have Morgan, and working our way down, we've got Morgan Sprague, Jasmine Rodner, Elena Tyrenen, senior captain. Woo. Yeah. One of the top ten times ever run by a Lakeland athlete. And Ava Lacondro, she's the second fastest Lakeland runner of all time. Came within five seconds of the fastest. And next we have Jenna, sophomore. Aubrey, whose dad is right behind her, which is pretty sweet. Maddie Downs and Genevieve Conley. We brought a mix of varsity and JV because we're, we're one team. There is no difference for us. We're just a big family, and we like it that way.
One more thing Chris did not mention is that they were the second highest academic team in the state as well, so I think that's a big deal. So, now I'll turn it over to Mr. Marzalak.
Thanks. Good evening. Uh, my name's Jim Marzalak. I'm the athletic director at Milford High School. Uh, Milford also had a, um, very successful fall season. Um, just a few things that I wanted to highlight before I brought up our, um, honoree tonight. Our soccer team were conference champs and conference tournament champs, and it was the first boys' conference soccer championship since nineteen eighty-six. Um, our girls' united, um, swim and dive team, which is a co-op between Milford and Lakeland, were back-to-back, um, conference champions and also won the conference meet this year. Um, our football team, um, for the first time ever qualified four years in a row for the state playoffs. And then our equestrian team were, um, regional champs as well. But the biggest highlight of the season, um, is with us tonight. Joining us tonight is Milford cross-country coach Liz Smith, um, here to share a little bit about an extraordinary athlete of Kyle O'Rourke.
I have the pleasure tonight of introducing to you to Kyle O'Rourke. Kyle is a junior at Milford High School, and he was the individual, uh, conference champion as well as the individual regional champion for the second year in a row. Kyle this year was also the Oakland County champion, and he's only the fifth runner in Milford High School history to, um, accomplish that feat. He went on to the state meet where he placed individually as third, and he broke our school record in five thousand meters in a time of fifteen oh-two. He is, he was all-state this year, and he was academic all-state for the second year in a row. We are so proud of his accomplishments this year, and we really look forward to next year. Please help me in congratulating Kyle O'Rourke on a phenomenal season.
We don't get the athletic directors here very often, so if you'd return to the podium, both of you, please. You got a chance to introduce, but, uh, at the same time, we usually have, when we have presentations, we have questions from the board or comments. So, I want to see if we do have any questions or comments. I don't see any, but I do. Uh, I think, uh, it's, it's absolutely amazing, our athletes and the things that they accomplish. And you, you just brought a very small sample of the quality that we have within our athletic department. We are a triple-A school district. We believe in athletics. We believe in the arts, and we believe in the academics, and they all go together. I think it's extraordinary when you talk about the academics along with our athletics and how well our students, student-athletes perform. It's, it's a reflection of not only you two as athletic directors, but the buildings that you represent. So, I just want to say congratulations, thank you from the Board of Education. And, uh, boy, I noticed that, uh, you know, you guys get along really well, but I don't see that you've come, come up far enough because I don't see Todd wearing Milford colors and Jim wearing Lakeland colors today. So, congratulations. Thank you very much. You got off easy. And with that, I, I know that there's another, a number of athletes that you presented tonight that, uh, you get up bright and early. You can stay for the rest of the meeting, or we'll take a short recess and you can leave if you'd like. It's up to you. Next, we have the, uh, school presentation, uh, Muir Middle School. Dr. Slough.
Thank you. Yes, we have the proud principal from Muir Middle School here with us, Mr. Diggsby, and I'm going to introduce him, and he will introduce the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Diggsby. I'm the principal at Muir Middle School. Uh, tonight I'm joined, uh, by Lisa Dunleavy here. She's our teacher consultant at Muir. Um, and I'm also joined by, uh, the stars of the show tonight for us, which are our paraeducators. Uh, at Muir, we pride ourselves on building relationships, community, and creating a family atmosphere where all students feel cared for by the adults that help them learn and grow. Teachers, administrators, student services, coaches are all amazing and obvious examples of the people who guide our students. But it's impossible to talk about caring adults and the Muir culture without highlighting our unsung heroes. without highlighting our unsung heroes, our paraeducators. Our paras are an integral part of the fabric of who we are at Mure Middle School. The care they show, the patience they have, and the drive to support each of our students every single day is inspiring. In an effort to hear voices other than my own, I put out a survey to our students and staff for feedback on our wonderful paras. The speed and enthusiasm which the responses poured in was a testament to the respect they've earned and the positive impact that they have. While not all of our classroom paras could be here tonight, I would like to introduce all of them and highlight each and every one nonetheless, sharing both a student and a teacher quote that I received from the feedback. We have our, don't worry, I chose wisely. Now, we do have, so at Mure Middle School, we have our categorical cognitively impaired program as well as support for our students on IEPs on the resource room side as well. So we have a mixture of that represented with our para-support here tonight. So not with us, I'm going in alphabetical order, but not with us tonight is Georgina Allen. Our student says, "Miss Allen is the best, I really like her." Mr. Williams, one of our teachers, says, "Georgina does an outstanding job providing consistent support for students and creating a positive, inclusive learning environment. Her ability to assist with individualized instruction and foster a sense of confidence among students is truly commendable." Next, we have Stephanie Barris, Stephanie is here. Student says, "Miss Barris helps me and loves me." Miss Spelacy, one of our teachers, says, "Stephanie is amazing with students. She shows them that she cares, and she sticks with them through the fun and the fiascos." Next, we have Emma Bennett, who is not in attendance tonight, but we had a student say that Miss Bennett is the nicest person I know. Miss Spelacy also said about Miss Bennett, "She stays cool under pressure, has the biggest heart, and takes on all tasks with enthusiasm." Our next para is in attendance, Michael Bjorkman, aka Mr. B. Jack says, student, "Mr. B is the best, he is always chill and loves to help. When there is a hard question, he comes over and makes it simple. He is really good at explaining stuff." Mr. Skatska, one of our teachers, says, "Mr. B is among the most patient, helpful, and kind humans I've ever known. His ability to connect with students is amazing, and his help with students and staff at Mure is immeasurable." Next, we have Lisa Hightman, who is here tonight. Student says, "Miss Hightman is nice and she always helps me." Miss Doggett, one of our staff, says, "Lisa is the perfect match for my class. Her enthusiasm, humor, and upbeat attitude encourages the kids to do their best. She helps students be successful and feel confident." Next, we have Kristy Marslak, Kristy's here tonight. A student named Lily says, "Miss Marslak helps me a lot. I just love her so much that I can't even describe how much I love her." Mr. Donahue, one of our teachers, says, "Kristy is quite possibly the best para-professional I have had the pleasure to work with in nearly 20 years of education. The students would say the same too. She's helpful and supportive to all. She goes out of her way to ensure that all are given whatever support or assistance they need." Next, we have Amy Schwendeman, Amy's here tonight. Peyton says, "I appreciate Miss S because every time I'm feeling down and don't want to work, she checks up on me and helps me when I need it. If I ever need quiet time, she brings me to a space to take a test so I can focus better. She's a kind, loving para and shows she cares for others." Miss Pinter says, "Schwenney is one of the funniest people I know. She's awesome and patient with students, especially when they're struggling. She's always willing to jump in and help even in the toughest of situations. Mure is incredibly lucky to have her." And our last para who's not in attendance is Jen Venezia. Donovan says, "Miss V is nice and helps me a lot. She gives me extra time and helps me with my missing assignments. She's very kind and considerate." And Mr. DeVoren says, "Jen has worked on and off in my room for many years. She's become an integral part of my students' learning. She's always quick to help anyone who is in need of assistance and make the experience in my class much more productive for students." These are just a few examples of the many quotes I received. They paint a picture of how much our paras are appreciated by both staff and students. Lisa Dunleavy, to my left here, works closely with all of our paras as our teacher consultant, and she shared that she's worked with many of our paras for the last nine years. They're the most valuable assets to our students and teachers in the classroom. They have the patience of saints and go above and beyond to help all students be successful at Mure. Mure is a much better place because of them. I, Lisa, cannot express in words the gratitude I have for each of them on a daily basis. Thank you from the bottom of her heart. So in closing, the work our paras do at Mure Middle School is seen, it is valued, it is important. On behalf of the entire Mure community, I want to thank them for their kindness, their humor, their dedication, and we could not reach our full potential at Mure without you. So thank you.
Any comments from the board? Excellent. Lisa, I could not add any more to your quote than what was read by the gentleman to your right. You guys are amazing. The opportunities that you provide to our students at Mure is just tremendous, and that goes not only for you, but for all of our para-pros. So once again, thank you very much for being here. And the offer also goes for you, you can stay for the rest of the meeting, or I know you started off early, too. Next on the agenda is superintendent's communication, Dr. Sala.
Thank you, President Weisman. So I think we're going to pull up the website for a moment here. Okay, perfect, thank you. So a few things I want to touch on this evening before redistricting. One, this last weekend I had an opportunity to attend the Three Musketeers play that was hosted here at Lakeland High School, and I just want to give a shout out to Becky Hugaboom as well as the students that participated in that event. They did a marvelous, marvelous job, it was really, really well done. I know, I was watching some of the faces in the audience, a lot of smiles, a lot of laughs. It was fantastic, really enjoyed it. Congratulations to all of our Lakeland students that participated into Mrs. Hugaboom. Second, I wanted to provide a quick update in terms of where we are at on redistricting, and so I asked our team here to pull up the website. So this website's been live for a couple of weeks now, maybe three weeks. And the last two board meetings, I've done my best to provide an update in terms of where we are at in the process of releasing information regarding redistricting. As you've heard me say several times, you know, there was a lengthy process that engaged multiple stakeholders in our strategic planning work and ultimately led to the culmination of recommendations that our Board of Education adopted in December of 2023. And that strategic plan and that adopted action established the parameters by which we would build the redistricting plan. So there's a lot of information already on the website, there's a video that introduces sort of the process and how we got to where we are. And then on the right-hand side, there is a frequently asked questions document that will continue to be populated with more information and details. There's a presentation that was provided about a month and a half ago now regarding the process whereby defining boundaries were explained. And then the 23 through 28 strategic plan is also there. What you will see later this week, likely Wednesday afternoon is what we're targeting, is a street guide will be added on the right there, as well as an interactive map so that any resident in the community can kind of zoom in, see where their house is, and identify where the boundaries are and the feeder patterns for all our schools. And that will be, what will be included in that map is a map for elementary as well as middle and high school. And what you might recall is that right now currently our boundaries as they exist, we have some elementary schools that actually feed to both high schools, feed to all three middle schools. So you could be in fifth grade with, you know, 90 to 120 students and only go to the middle school with 30 of those students that are currently in your school. We have very discombobulated boundaries as they currently exist. And so the charge for us was to move from three middle schools to two middle schools, build a new middle school on the Milford High School campus, completely gut and renovate White Lake Middle School, and have four elementaries feeding to one middle school, feeding to one high school. And in that way, students who start kindergarten with their peers are actually graduating with their peers. And so that was, that was a goal, that was a target, and I feel comfortable with where we're landing. We are putting sort of the final touches. I know some members of our pupil services team literally worked all weekend on continuing to refine and wrap up those, those street guides. So we've needed every second, but we're almost, almost there. And I'm very proud of the work because it provides families with eight months to prepare before the upcoming school year. So we aren't just dropping this on our families and saying, okay, now, you know, changing schools in a month, there's plenty of time to prepare, to plan, to make adjustments, and to go where we're headed. And we were able to accomplish 99.9% of the parameters that the board established through that, through that strategic plan, and it's heading us in the, in the right direction. So more to come on that. Like I said, likely Wednesday, I expect Wednesday afternoon, we should be able to release all of the information that I just spoke to on a high level. So with that, Mr. President, the last thing I would say is this is our last board meeting before we have a holiday break. I just want to wish everybody happy holidays. I know I'll be celebrating with my family and my loved ones, and I wish you all the best, and I hope that you are safe this holiday season and spend some time with family, friends, and with loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have student leadership. Ms. Pastana, do we have any student leadership tonight?
No student leadership tonight.
All right, association communications. Ms. Holander.
Dr. Sala, you did an amazing intro to my speech tonight. Good evening, everyone. For my comments tonight, I am taking off my association hat and speaking to all of you in our community as a longtime Huron Valley social worker. We are very aware that new school boundaries will be released later this week. As with any change, it is natural to have a mixture of emotions. There are so many reasons why these changes are so very important for our students and the district. But tonight I want to share with you a true story to give you some perspective. For 12 years, many moons ago, from 1998 to 2010, I was the social worker at Spring Mills. In any typical year, I always helped students navigate the ups and downs of friendship, especially our upper elementary girls. Each year in early May, our fifth-grade students would be very excited about visiting their new middle school. There would be a tremendous amount of chatter about possible classes, new teachers, and oh, those lockers, and will I be able to open them in time to get to class before the bell? On the morning of fifth-grade orientation every year, three buses would pull up the driveway because Spring Mills fed into three different middle schools. Our students would quickly realize which of their friends were getting on the bus with them to go to the same middle school, or which of their friends was going to a different middle school just a few short months from then. After orientation, the amount of time that I would spend with fifth-grade girls would increase significantly. They would rearrange their friendships to make sure that their best friends were going to middle school with them. I would often have girls crying in my office saying that their best friend, who's going to a different middle school, now has switched best friends. Springtime was filled with confusion, sadness, and lots of tears. And since Dr. Sala mentioned, since the students going to each middle school was never equally divided, there was always a small group of students who would go to a middle school without many or any of their friends. Now, I've been a social worker for 33 years, so I definitely know that no matter the circumstances, fifth-grade girl friendships are really tricky. However, the new HVS boundary patterns will ensure that the positive relationships that they have built with their peers through the years will be given the opportunity to continue as they move through middle school and high school together. So to our families and our students who are anxious about this transition, please know we've got this. Our educators and our administrators all will work hard to build relationships with all of our students, help them feel connected to their new schools, and encourage those new friendships. We all have the shared goal of our students feeling comfortable in school, feeling connected to their peers, and knowing and feeling that they belong. So as we start our winter break in four short days, I wish all of our Huron Valley community a joyous holiday season and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, board correspondence, we having board correspondence, Secretary Pastana.
No correspondence tonight.
Thank you. Treasurer Grzynkowski, treasurer's report?
None tonight.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is reports from the board committee. I'll start off with the minutes from our last executive committee, which was held on December 10th at 12:30 PM at the Huron Valley School administrative offices. The meeting was called to order, present were myself, along with member Dodd, Pastana, our superintendent, Dr. Sala, Brad Roberts, and Heather Caddell. No one was absent. There were no public comments. We reviewed the tonight's board meeting agenda. We had nothing to report as it relates to school safety and security. Facility usage, Brad Roberts shared the district's facility rental process, including custodial support, safety monitoring, and fees charged for facilities rental. He shared his work to ensure consistency in fees. The board supported requiring security for larger events, especially during school hours. Security consideration will now be assessed on a case-by-case basis. Class size was discussed, Dr. Sala shared information on current class size policies of surrounding districts and compared them to current class sizes in our district. Board study session, the committee discussed possible topics for the board study session, which is now scheduled for February 26, 2025. We provided as a committee a debrief as it relates to vibe, where we meet with, met with our elementary staff. The committee shared topics discussed that are recent vibe in the valley. They expressed their appreciation for the opportunity to address concerns with the district representatives from our middle schools. Middle school design debrief, the committee discussed the recent middle school design meeting and its purpose to revisit prior conversations that have been around the middle school designs and ensured all members of the team were brought up to speed. The committee's discussion focused on the group's composition and its role in shaping the middle school construction design. The meeting was held, as I said, at the administrative offices, and it was adjourned at 2:18 PM, and our next meeting will be January 7th, 2025, at 1 o'clock. Next, TLT.
Teaching Learning Technology met on December 2nd at the administration building. The meeting was called to order at 4:05. Present were myself, Ms. Carter, Mr. Dimick, Mr. DeVernier, Dr. Sala, Mr. Limberg, Ms. Bjorkman, Dr. Nemeth, Mr. Endicott, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Bod, Ms. Horwitz, and our student leader, Elena. There was no public comment. We discussed an unfinished business, section 20- Section twenty-three G Michigan kids back on track. Mrs. Bjorkman provided an update on the twenty-three G grant, which has been used to provide support for student literacy and math instruction. In addition, this grant was used to offer our summer extension program. The final funds from this grant have been allocated for our elementary math coaches and I-ready instructional resources. The grant must be spent and will expire September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, then we talked about section thirty-five J literacy resources. Uh, Ms. Bjorkman also provided a brief update on the section thirty-five J grant. This is also the last year for this grant, which was, which awarded the district with over a million dollars to improve student literacy. The district purchased decodable books, phonics, multisensory literacy resources for the Apollo Early Childhood Center. High interest, low ability books were also purchased for students in grades three through five, and funds have been allocated for professional learning with the Reading League on a variety of topics, including dyslexia training for all staff. Under new business, innovative training or programming, I'm sorry, the TLT department has been developing plans for middle school core and elective programming. As a result of the strategic plan recommendations, the team is focused on new career pathway explorations, expanded choice, meeting the needs of all students, and premier programming. The team will be meeting with elective teachers over the next few weeks to finalize these recommendations. Sorry. The team is also planning a presentation for the full board in January. Uh, strategic plan updates, in addition to innovative programming work, our focus on social emotional learning also continued. Julie McDaniel's presented at, um, the AIM team last month, continuing the focus on trauma-informed practices. Uh, Mr. Endicott provided results of a recent fishing campaign under safety and security updates. And, uh, under student leadership, Elena provided an update on student activities at Milford High School. Students have been fundraising for Milford Miracles, which provides holiday help for local families in need. The ELA department raised the most money this year. Leadership students are now busy wrapping and shopping for presents that will be donated to these families. There was, uh, no other, no public comment at the end. We adjourned at four fifty-two. Our next meeting was scheduled for December seventeenth, and we canceled that, and our next one is January fourteenth. Thanks, John. January fourteenth at four o'clock.
Thank you very much. Finance and operations, Treasurer Grizankowski.
Finance and operations met on Wednesday, December eleventh, uh, at eight AM at the admin building. Present were Mr. Wiseman, myself, Ms. Ryan virtually, Dr. Sala, uh, Mr. Van Goethe, Mr. Rebe, Ms. Kerrigan, and Ms. Maruskin. We did not have any public comments. Um, we do not have anything on the consent agenda this evening. We do have unfinished business, which is bid pack thirteen, the multipurpose rooms, the, um, adults with, uh, or I should say, uh, Americans Disability Act upgrades, and the middle school classroom renovations. The committee had no further questions. The administration is asking the board to approve the letter of recommendation from Clark Construction in the amount of nine million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, with a twelve percent contingency in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents. A middle school transition allowance of a million dollars for a total amount of twelve million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven and four cents. This project is funded through the two thousand twenty-three Capital Projects Fund. We also looked at bid pack fourteen, Oak Valley's, Middle, Oak Valley Middle Schools, uh, temperature controls. Once again, the committee had no further questions, and the administration is asking the board to approve this, this evening as well. No new business. We did not have any safe, safety and security updates. Uh, Mr. Van Goethe did provide an update to the committee on bid pack nine, along with discussion on closing out, um, some of our previous bid packs. Uh, we did review board policies, administrative guidelines for finance and operations. The committee did have a chance to review the finance and operations board policy updates provided by Neola, and will bring those updates to this evening's board meeting under new business for your review. We did discuss the middle school steering committee, uh, that met on Monday, December ninth. Uh, the committee revisited images from the tours taken in August in what, to West Bloomfield and Northville Middle Schools, and voted j or n on potential design features to be included in the first draft renderings for both White Lake and the new middle school. Minutes will be shared with those unable to attend the meeting. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, January eighth. We reviewed the general fund budget to actual as of October thirty-first. Uh, we, for our future discussion items, we will be speaking with the MAC Service Corp., which will provide us an update at our next committee meeting in January. The meeting was adjourned at eight twenty-four A, uh, AM, which is a new record for finance and operations. Just want to say, under my watch. Just teasing. Uh, next meeting is January eighth at eight AM. I really hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Next, communications, marketing, and legislative committee.
Yes. Our last meeting was held on December third, two thousand twenty-four. Meeting was called to order by Ms. Cotter at two thirty-three PM. Members present were, uh, Mr. Wiseman, our alternate in place of me, I was not in attendance, Ms. Grizankowski, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Rothler, Dr. Sala, and Ms. Willis. There was no public comment. Regular agenda, uh, the first thing was the redistricting frequently asked questions. The committee discussed the redistricting frequently asked questions document that's available on our website, and also discussed upcoming communication regarding HVS redistricting, uh, reminding everybody that there is a great website out there with, um, helpful information, um, and where to go with questions. Next, uh, we discussed school, or they discussed school letterhead. Communication presented the committee with four letterhead examples from the suggestions at the last meeting. Committee made a few more suggestions, and communications will come back with the final two examples at the next meeting. Next, they talked about safety and security. Communication gave an update on the visitor and authorized personnel signage being placed throughout the district. Finally, they had a legislative update. The committee briefly discussed Michigan education funding and what it means for the district. The meeting was adjourned at three twenty-seven PM. The next meeting will be Tuesday, January fourteenth at two thirty PM at the administration building.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comments. Um, I do have three citizens' participation forms in front of me. If there are, are anyone else, or is there, if there is anyone else that would like to participate in public comments, please pass them on to Ms. Caddell at my far left. As a reminder, uh, we certainly appreciate our committee who shares their public comments and have that opportunity during this designated time of our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for us as a board to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communications. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated, as I said before, to conduct the business of Huron Valley schools in open session in accordance with open, the Open Meeting Act. We ask that during this time, if you are available, uh, please, uh, state your name, your address, and home school district before sharing your comments. Uh, that is a request. Furthermore, we also request that you refrain from any name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal texts unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, I, as the board president, to the extent permitted under the First Amendment, may interrupt or end your comment time. With that, um, we're going to start off with Natalie. Marganet, I believe.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Natalie Marganet, and I live in Preswick, and so do my friends over here as well. Our children go to Heritage. Today, I stand before you to express deep concerned, concern about the potential impact of changing school boundary lines for our children. While these decisions may seem like a logistical necessity, we cannot overlook the emotional toll they take on the youngest and most vulnerable members of our community. Children thrive in environments that provide stability and consistency. When boundary lines are redrawn, many kids are uprooted from their familiar schools, separated from close friends, trusted teachers, and support systems. Studies show that frequent schools changes can result in lower academic achievement, increased anxiety, and a loss of self-confidence. For young children, these relationships and routines form the foundation of their emotional and social development. Disrupting them can have long-lasting consequences. According to the American Psychological Association, consistent environments are essential for healthy and emotional cognitive development. When boundary changes force students to leave their school, they lose not only trusted teachers, but also friendships that are crucial for our social and emotional stability. Research shows that children who move schools frequently are thirty-five percent more likely to experience lower academic achievement and twenty-five percent more likely to face behavioral changes, challenges. Think about the eight-year-old who has finally found her footing with a teacher who understands her learning style, or the ten-year-old whose friendships have given them courage to tackle tough days. Redrawing lines, taking away these critical anchors, leaving children feeling lost. Let's also consider the broader impact on families. Research from Journal of Urban Economic reveals that frequent school changes correlate with decreased parental involvement, a key driver of student success. For working parents managing new commutes in unfamiliar environments can create additional stress, which inevitably affect their children. I urge you to think beyond maps and numbers. These boundary changes don't just shift students, they uproot lives. And if we truly value our children, we must prioritize their emotional well-being and developmental needs, ensuring any changes minimize harm and foster ability. You are wanting our children from Preswick to stay within the same school. I'm so sorry for crying. Thank you so much.
Next, uh, we have Richard Skoloski, followed by Erica.
How you doing? My name's Richard, HVS parent. I'm here to ta- today to talk about the accountability that people in our community deserve about what happened at the Spring Mills Elementary. Let's go back to the year two thousand nineteen, when a choice was made to allow this teacher into our elementary school. The responsibility was shifted, calling him a third-party employee. Your very own fax page claims that there's background checks on third-party employees. Who hires him? Well, the superintendent hires him. He's directly responsible for the hiring and controlling of the staff. Also, isn't HVS supposed to do their own criminal background check? And when an issue is found, a superintendent makes a decision whether to hire or not? Let's move forward to two thousand twenty-three, when a parent made a complaint about the sexual predator. Nothing was done to stop him, breaking policy number eight-four-six-two, student abuse neglect. There has not been any accountability recognizing this by the HVS board. There has been nothing done to hold any accountability to any staff. Did you know that one of the victims claims that attacks began sometimes in, in two thousand twenty-three? Probably didn't. How many sexual assaults could have been stopped? You, the board, gave him a one-hundred percent review despite what is obvious to the people in this community who is responsible. In April of two thousand twenty-four, many parents of Spring Mills found out about their children being sexually assaulted. There's been a public outcry that the school does something to make sure that it's not happening again. What's been done? So instead of hearing the voice of the community, nothing has been done. Nothing's been done to hold anyone accountable for hiring such a monster. Instead, the lack of safety continues to be ignored. The whole time you preach about how important their safety is and how much you care, the policy that HVS has was not followed, and there's been zero accountability of staff who are directly involved. Why is that? Well, in my opinion, it's because there's a small, it's a small club, and the public need not worry about that. So let's talk about, uh, you know, the board members coming up with a plan. Maybe annual background checks are in order, maybe random checks. That'd be, that'd be a start. Revising policy fourteen-twenty-one should be looked into. Let's talk about how the HVS students are taught about inappropriate touching and sexual misconduct. How often, and what are the lengths of these lessons? It's important to keep young people aware. I personally tried to open the Title IX case, reopen, I'm sorry, in which the Title IX coordinator would not follow your own policy, which I have here, and it states neither party shall be restricted in the ability to discuss allegations under investigations or to gather.
Thank you very much, Richard. Erica.
Hi, how are you all today? Um, I'm here seeking public apologies to all the parents that were told they were just a bunch of worked-up parents that had the wrong guy, to all the parents that were told it'll all blow over, to all the parents that were looked down upon by members of the board and some teaching staff, to all the parents that reached out to the board begging for help for their daughters, and they were ignored, to all the parents that were verbally attacked by staff for their daughters coming forward. An apology for the assaults toward the volunteers that continue to this day, for all the parents they had to endure, their children crying as the police were at the schools to protect a predator and those that covered him. Due to the negligence of your staff, numerous children have suffered, they had to endure. It was known about it and admitted by Principal Bentley. She admitting knowing Mr. D had children in his lap well before the original three girls came forward. The police report states in two thousand twenty-three, she knew this man had these children in his lap, keeping his seat warm, rubbing their inside of their thighs, touching their breasts. We demand an apology for everything you put these girls through. As it has been proven that it was not only the children that came forward in two thousand twenty-three, two of your staff members did also. So I, as a parent, am demanding a public apology to each and every parent, to every child that were laughed at, mocked, assaulted, called liars, told not to speak of an assault, and put down. Teachers that had knowledge continue to treat these children negatively and differently. I'm also asking once again for Mr. Sala to take action on the Title IX not being done properly, for the credentials of the coordinator to be brought forth to interview minors about sexual assault. The police could not interview my daughter without someone right there from Care House. They couldn't ask questions. How can she? Where are her credentials? What's her experience on it? What's her background to be able to talk to a nine-year-old about being sexually assaulted? I'd like to see it, this is the second time I've asked you. We were not given proper time as your protocol states. We asked for credentials. I'm guessing we'll never see anything that doesn't, has never existed.
Pardon me? Thank you. Uh, next, Ivy.
Hello. Um, Ivy Casia, I live in Preswick. Um, I have a fourth and fifth grader at Heritage Elementary and a junior at Milford High. I just wanted to speak really quick about the redistricting. I knew about the middle school redistricting. I did not know it was going to affect the elementary school, actually. Um, so I just transferred my children to Huron Valley from a private school in Orchard Lake just this past March. Um, they have been thriving, they have found their people, they're doing amazing academically. Um, my current fourth grader, who's a little, um, the nervous one, little anxiety, she fit right in with open arms. Um, my concern, not so much about the fifth grader going into sixth grade, she'll be fine, but my current fourth grader, who has been so welcomed and just is really acclimated very nicely into the school, um, I would hate to have to see her be affected by the redistrict, redistricting, um, to make another change for her. I think it would be very difficult for her to make another change, uh, just because she did so well with the one we just did in March. And pulling a child from one school to another in the middle of the school year was not an easy decision, but it was the best decision for our family, and we don't regret it. It's been great. Um, on the FAQ, it did say that for open enrollment, if we were, um, affected by the redistricting, that you would do your best to honor requests, um, with a focus upon the current fourth graders, uh, going into fifth grade. So I would really just like to maybe emphasize that if it does affect our current fourth graders, to please really give serious consideration to those open enrollments. to please really give serious consideration to those open enrollments for those kids who are going into that fifth grade. Because fifth grade is, we all know, a very prominent transition year, and I think having that new transition in fifth grade might be more difficult on the children than I think a lot of people realize, even though they are very, you know, little ones are usually pretty flexible, but there would be an emotional toll, I think, for those children going into fifth grade next year with the redistricting. So again, I would just like to emphasize if you could do your best to maybe honor the FAQ promise of trying to keep those fourth-grade students together as fifth graders for that one last year. I think a lot of people would really appreciate that in general. And also, as I said, as someone who just transferred into Huron Valley, to be like, oh, I didn't know about this other change. It might be a little bit difficult. And just as a side note, my son transferred from St. Mary's Orchard Lake to Milford High, and it's been a fantastic transition for him, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ivy. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have Exhibits A1 through A3. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, and motion by Member Dimick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Treasurer Grisimkowski. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have unfinished business. This information in this business was presented to the board at our last board meeting. Dr. Sala will start off with board policy updates. Exhibit B. Do we have any, have you received any questions over the last two weeks? Or do you have any comments to make?
No, we're looking at policies 3120.08, 5340, and 8321. I have not had any questions since the last board meeting. Just, you might recall, two of the policies deal with CPR training for students and staff, as well as criminal justice information security, how it's stored, basically, the electronic format of criminal justice information security.
All right, does anybody have any other questions of Dr. Sala as it relates to these policies? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the board policy updates as presented.
I'll support that one, too.
Motion made by Vice President Dodd, seconded by Member Cotter. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is the approval of state virtual learning days, Exhibit C. Before I take a motion, I know we had this presented to us a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Sala, do you have any further comments?
I do not. I don't, I have not had any questions, Mr. Dimick, or have you? No.
And this is revolving around days to make it more conducive for testing for our high school students primarily?
For middle and high school. It's three days total, virtual days allotted, 15 total under the School Aid Act.
Great, all right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve the state virtual learning days.
And I'm going to support that one.
All right. Motion made by Member Dimick. Motion was seconded by Member Cotter. The only comment that I have, this information will be out and presented and provided to parents well in advance of those days.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is Bid PAC 13, multi-purpose rooms, ADA upgrades, and middle school classroom renovations, Exhibit D. Dr. Sala?
Yep, this is another one that was presented at the last board meeting. I have not had any questions. I know Mr. Van Goghtham has taken this to the Finance and Operations Committee on a couple of occasions. Have you had any additional questions, Mr. Van Goghtham? No additional questions, we'd ask approval of the board as presented.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Sure, I'll move the Board of Education approve Bid PAC 13, multi-purpose room, ADA upgrades, and middle school classroom renovations as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Member Ryan, seconded by Treasurer Grisimkowski. Any comments or questions?
I will, real quick. Just wanted to thank Jeffrey and team and Clark Construction for answering all the questions I bombarded them with. So thank you.
Great. Absolutely great questions that were shared with the rest of the board. I think this is a culmination of a tremendous amount of input and a lot of work. When we talk about multi-purpose room, maybe a little bit more of a definition of what that multi-purpose room is and the area that's being affected. And I know the tremendous amount of input that we received, maybe Jeffrey or Dr. Sala. Could you get into a little bit more detail of what we're approving here?
Sure, sure. So we're talking about the two spaces at Lakeland and Milford High Schools, respectively. The former leisure pool areas are being converted for student instructional spaces. We're calling them multi-purpose rooms because they'll be used for a variety of instructional opportunities for students, including our band program, including robotics for many of our students. We are equipping those spaces with high-yield electrical output so we can adjust to advancing technologies. And I mean frankly, you know, as we look at kindergarten kiddos that are coming into our system today, we're really preparing them for a workforce and jobs that by the time they're seniors don't even exist. So these spaces are being created in such a way that we can be agile and flex in order to create instructional spaces that meet the demands of tomorrow.
Great, thank you. I do know, as I said before, the amount of time. I know people have asked numerous times what's going on with those spaces, but we wanted to certainly do our due diligence, get a tremendous amount of input from the end-users, not only from our teachers, but from our community on how those spaces might be used. And I know part of that visioning is with our creation of our two campuses, those spaces will be available to our middle schools also. So it's a great use of space and a great use of instructional space. We still will have our competition pools available for the community and for our inter-classic teams.
That's correct.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have Bid PAC 14, Oak Valley Middle School Temperature Controls. Dr. Sala?
It's another one that was presented at the last board meeting. I've not had any additional questions, have you, Mr. Van Goghtham? So we are asking for board approval as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve Bid PAC 14, Oak Valley Middle School's temperature controls as presented.
I'm going to support that.
All right. Motion made by Treasurer Grisimkowski, seconded by Vice President Dodd. Any comments or questions? Yes.
The Oak Valley HVS system is baffling because it can't be controlled by anyone I have a phone number for. So making this change, I know, is costly, but as we go into future use of that building with Rakin Community Ed, with Harbor High School, with adult education, it's going to be used at all hours of the night and day, and this is absolutely vital. So thank you. I know it's expensive, but I think it's the right thing to do. And I think this is the last one.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note, it's the original system that was installed. And so as we've talked about for many years in Huron Valley, we hadn't passed a bond in over 20 years back in 19. So many of our facilities suffered the consequences of that. Oak Valley Middle School is one we have not touched. We have not really touched our middle schools because we weren't 100% certain what redistricting and strategic plans would ultimately look like. But now that we know, we know what's going to be at Oak Valley, when I'm going to call it Oak Valley Middle School anymore, it's going to be the Oak Valley Center, it's time to make the necessary upgrades in that facility.
All right, any other questions, comments? Maybe I could direct a question to you, Dr. Sala, or maybe Jeffrey. I think this is a prime example of what we do as it relates to inquiring as it relates to potential partners. This wasn't the low bid. There were a couple bids that were a little bit lower than this one, but we choose to recommend this one out of the six. Maybe it might be more appropriate. Jeffrey, maybe you can explain what the process is as it relates to going through the details to award a contract like this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weisman. So typically, if the low bid is a responsive and responsible bidder, we will take that as the recommendation for the board. However, in this case, and in most cases, as a thorough review is done by our construction manager and then ultimately reviewed and approved by us, there are several factors above and beyond price that are important to the district. And so one of those is a risk. That could be a financial risk, it could be a safety risk in their score and the other jobs that they've worked on. And so in this case, the lowest bidder was basically too much of a risk for the district to take on as the low bidder. They did not provide the exact system that we're looking for as far as the controls. So, you know, even though they wanted $558,000, they might have ended up doing what we needed them to do. And so that was too much for us to take on. And then the second lowest bidder did not meet the specs for the product that we were looking at. So again, the second low bid was taken out. So typically, we would like to see the lowest bidder be responsive and responsible, but in this case, the, out of the three people who are, you know, competing for this work, the most expensive is the one that we're awarding it to because it meets all of our specifications. So it's a really thorough process, and I'm appreciative of having, you know, partners like we do with our architects and our construction managers because they're doing a lot of the lifting for that before we even see it. And then we, as a district, are double-checking that to make sure that we're confident and comfortable with who is being selected. And again, like you said, Mr. Weisman, in this particular case, it's actually the most expensive person that we're awarding the contract to, but they're going to do everything that we actually need to do, and we're confident that they're going to do it right. This particular company has actually done some existing workforce already that has some say in how we do future work, but it definitely isn't the lead factor. Obviously, if they've done a good job, that's helpful. We've had some contractors that we haven't been too happy with, and they unfortunately will not be doing additional work for us. So it works out that we're familiar with this company, and they're actually a participant in the Huron Valley Schools/Mac Services Corp. Cooperative. So they're also participating with other entities that may want to do work based on similarities in the stuff that we're doing here in Huron Valley Schools.
Great, thank you very much. I know as a board member and as a taxpayer, I appreciate the responsible contracting process that you guys follow. And it's important for us to dot all the i's and cross all the t's prior to us awarding a contract like this because obviously, we want the work done right. And we want it done right the first time, so. Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick. I think it's important to note, too, the two low that didn't meet the specifications, it's important to meet those specs or these temperature controls won't work with the current system that's in there. So we had to, you know, reject their bids because it wouldn't work with the system.
Exactly. And I know in the documentation that you provided, they were communicated with and had an opportunity to expand their definition of what their understanding was, and they failed to meet our specifications. Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, we do have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, under new business, we have another board policy update, Finance and Operations, Exhibit F in our package. Dr. Sala?
Thank you. I'd ask Mr. Van Goghtham to speak to this item.
Yeah, so the board over the last several years has worked, we have worked together as a team with Niola, which is a policy-writing entity, to assist the district in basically updating our board policies to be as current and accurate as possible. Since that time, we've already had some board policies that Niola is recommending we make some small, minor edits to. And so we had the opportunity to look at board policies. I'm not going to list them all, but they're, as you know, here in the document. This is a first read. We are not asking for the board to take final approval, but the administration and then ultimately FNO, the committee that we reviewed this through, feels comfortable with the policies as they've been amended. And so we're asking the board to take consideration for these and then vote on them in January at our next board meeting.
Great, thank you. So similar to what we do with everything, this is the first read. We have this time from now until the next board meeting to ask any questions. If there are questions that are raised, those questions will be shared with the rest of the board. There is a lot of good reading. As we go through this, remember, the green, I believe, is the new items, and then the pink is the areas that are going to be crossed out of the policy. So with that, if you do have any questions, they go to Dr. Sala, or he'll pass them on to Mr. Van Goghtham. So thank you very much. Next, public comments. Are there any other? Nothing? All right, next is Good and Welfare. Anybody have any Good and Welfare? Yes, Treasurer Grisimkowski?
I was able to attend the Holiday Hope for Kids here at Lakeland High School. That was an exceptional program. It was incredible to see all of our students, regardless of ability, participating in crafts and the music that was provided, Santa Claus. It was like we literally had five-year-olds, no matter how old they were. It was just the most incredible opportunity to watch all of these kids interact. And I just am so appreciative of the staff here at Lakeland and the leadership team that put this together. Truly, there are no words to express what a wonderful program this is and how fortunate we are in Huron Valley to have programs like this where our students can interact in a really meaningful and powerful way. So, well done, Lakeland.
Great. Yes, Denise?
I just, anybody that wants to listen to some great music, they should go to the Holiday Choir Concert, which is this Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Milford High School. I attend every year, and it's always a great time.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas or whatever holiday that you celebrate over the next few weeks. As our board always tells our administration, please turn off your phones and ignore all the emails that you might get. All right, find a relaxing time, and we'll see you next year. With that, our meeting is adjourned.